Estamos começando a nossa sessão número nove e última. A primeira apresentação será de João Ventura. Ele é arquiteto e candidato de doutoramento em Iscafé, Lisboa, apoiado por um fundo FCT. O trabalho dele é explorar temas focados na decôtomação entre emergência e composição no contexto urbano. Análise multivariada de morfologia urbana, configuração e uso público open space com relevância para o quadrante urbano do país português. Explorando o potencial de ferramentas computacionais e minería de dados e técnicas de aprendizagem automática, ele testa a habilidade de aceitar a complexidade dessas relações e de abrir análises espaciais e urbanismo. A divulgação desta investigação foi realizada através de apresentações nacionais, publicações e workshops. Ele se graduou da faculdade de Porto, em 1998, e exerceceu atividade profissional em arquitetura e urbanismo, tanto em colaboração como individualmente. Post-graduado em 2013 no curso de Estudos Avançados em Arquitetura Digital em Iscafé e na faculdade de Porto. Ele está apresentando sobre minería de dados, análises espaciais e design algoritmico.
Eu vou falar um pouco dos assuntos que nós falamos, principalmente sobre minería de dados, mas de uma perspectiva muito prática, de uma forma muito prática, introduzindo conceitos, algumas ferramentas, alguns métodos e depois ilustrando com alguns exercícios. Principalmente, foi isso que fizemos antes. E assumo que os participantes sabem poucas ou nada sobre a minería de dados, então eu dei uma revisão sobre o assunto e alguma contextualização. Esse foi apenas o quadro do workshop. Quando o workshop começou, houve oito pessoas lá. Foi legal, uma ambientes muito relaxadas. Principalmente, na manhã, introduzimos os conceitos e as ferramentas e no meio da tarde, jogamos um pouco com... Não, e nesse dualidade, primeiro minería de dados e depois scripting de patentes e tentando conectar os dois. Agora, para a introdução, eu só digo que comecei a introduzi-lo e apenas dizendo que se tornou tão um bicho na última vez, por algum tempo agora, desde a escala do internet e o grande impacto. Mas mesmo nos últimos tempos, em algumas semanas, se tornou... Foi colocado aos destes, não por razões melhores, mas eu estava interessado em mostrar para eles o site de Cambridge Analytics. Antes do workshop, eu fui lá para ver, nunca o vi. E foi interessante ver o lado comercial e político de Cambridge, lado a lado. É o mesmo, claro, sobre as notícias que brocam sobre a relação com o Facebook e na campanha do presidente Trump. Ele diz que é uma campanha dirigida pelo dado, digital. E no mesmo tempo, foi o primeiro acidente mortal com carro autodinheiro nos Estados Unidos. E a raiva contra a máquina, que funcionava nos Califórnia e assim por diante. Mas, e agora, apenas para contextualizar, há muitas pessoas estabelecendo esses efeitos na humanidade de maneira séria. Por exemplo, esse livro de Niko Postrom, Superinteligência. Principalmente, eles estão preocupados com o ponto em que a máquina inteligente superará o intelecto humano. E chamam de singularidade. E eles indicaram que para 2045, será suprimido por máquinas. Mas agora, após esse contexto, eu introduzi a minería de dados como um sub-filho da ciência computacional que se conecta com outros sub-filos. Também tem vários nomes, dependendo do campo onde é aplicado. A minería de dados é uma mais conotação com o negócio e o marketing e assim por diante. Mas usam as mesmas ferramentas como outros campos da tecnologia e da ciência. Então, há tudo ao nosso redor. Agora, em um certo ponto, usam a minería de dados ou aprendizagem automática mais propriamente, o campo de inteligência artificial que trabalha com aprendizagem. Então, existem vários nomes para a minería de dados. E eles falam sobre o especial, é um tipo de minería de dados especial também. Mas eu acho que um bom matemático diria que são só estatísticas e o resto é só... Bem, a minería de dados em si em si é um processo ou procedimento padrão que começa com a definição do problema. Você tem que entenderlo. Identificar, requer o dado e adquirir, prepará-lo e pré-processá-lo. Essa fase é normalmente cerca de 85% do trabalho. Depois, modelar o dado, aplicando aprendizagem automática, algoritmos para modelá-lo. E depois, treino e testando. Eles são conectados, para validar seu modelo e depois desplegar ou usar ou apresentá-lo. Este é um procedimento padrão. E a minería de dados pode ser entendido como a aplicação prática de aprendizagem automática. Só para contextualizar, eu estava dizendo que o aprendizado é um campo de inteligência artificial, mas a inteligência artificial tem muitos objetivos. Além de razonar, o aprendizado seria um deles. E esta é a parte onde a minería de dados funciona mais. Um indução de algo, não é apenas uma redução. Aprender do fundo, você diria, com exemplos. No aprendizado, no aprendizado automático, existem dois tipos de aprendizado. Eu diria aprendizado supervisado e aprendizado unsupervisado. Esses são quando você sabe o que está tentando classificar ou quando você não tem uma ideia do que está tentando classificar ou você está trabalhando com dados estruturados, como imagens ou texto plano, algo assim. Existem outros aprendizados de fortalecimento, mas esses são os dois principais. Quando estamos falando sobre aprendizado e aprendizado automático, existem apenas esses dois tipos. Supervisado, você sabe o que está classificando ou fazendo regressão. Ou unsupervisado. Nesse caso, se for unsupervisado, você está fazendo classificação ou estimação densa ou algo assim. Ou reduzindo a dimensão. Então, eu apenas introduzi a diferença entre classificação e regressão. E este é apenas um exemplo para ilustrar qual é a diferença entre modelar como linha de regressão ou modelar como uma barreira de decisão ou algo assim, entre classificar e fazer regressão. Seu dado é contínuo ou não é contínuo. Então, e depois, o overall, o principal esquema para o aprendizado automático. Você tem o dado normalmente e você o divide em duas partes, uma para testar e uma para treinar. Você faz um modelo na parte do treinamento. Você faz predição na parte do texto e você faz então a avaliação com os nomes dos dados que nunca entrou na construção do modelo. Então, é apenas uma generalização do processo. Então, há muitos deles. Existem abordagens ou algoritmos para isso. Vários, dependendo do caso, você poderia usar um ou outro. Normalmente, você usa vários ao mesmo tempo e depois os classifica e você tenta usar o melhor e você faz. Aqui, foi apenas para ilustrar um caso, essa é uma análise semântica latinha. Isso seria automaticamente classificando documentos com keywords. Keywords poderiam ser qualquer coisa. Os documentos poderiam estar no Twitter do internet ou newsletters ou algo assim, e-mails. E os keywords, você poderia dar os keywords ou extrair automaticamente para frequências. Isso é apenas para tornar mais alegre para os participantes saberem que a minería de dados é muito sobre a estrutura dos dados. Então, você pode ir em frente. Mas primeiro de tudo, falando sobre o próprio dado, apenas para ter uma introdução, eu não vou demorar muito sobre isso. Foi apenas para introduzir que isso é tudo classificado, o dado vem em tabelas. Existem várias regras ou labores para cada coluna. Normalmente, existe uma coluna de rua diferente. Você chama o laboratório ou o objetivo que você quer predictar. E as outras colunas são o regular, o dado, os variáveis, que vamos usar para a predição. E isso é apenas uma maneira, porque eu estava tentando... Isso seria introduzir porque em Python você tem outros nomes para isso e existem vários nomes. E tentando dizer que temos tabelas, mas podemos ter arrandas multidimensionais com tabelas. Normalmente, esse tipo de arrandas 3D são muito usadas para obter conjuntos de imagens. Por exemplo, você tem imagens comparadas, até compridas em um conjunto de dados. Então, você tem várias imagens, era como uma切割. Então, os problemas com o dado. Normalmente, todos esses tipos de problemas com o dado com a fase de processamento que leva quase, eu não sei, 80% do tempo é lidar com o dado porque eles podem vir de vários lugares, têm que ser moldados e limpas e assim por diante. Então, você tem que lidar com muito de dados perdidos, duplicados, incorretos, encodes, tipos errados. Reschapar o dado para o seu propósito, lidando com outlier e até tentar reduzir a dimensão se tiver muitos deles. Mas primeiro você tem que lidar com o explorar o dado, então eu estava pensando em jogar isso. Após eu o introduzi dessa maneira, então eu disse: "Mas você tem que começar com o explorar o dado." Você tem que fazer a análise tipicamente de estatísticas discutivas. Não, é visual data. Então, você tem que usar o que é univarado para análise. Você está analisando cada uma das suas colunas para ver a forma de seu dado ou você tem que analisá-lo por pares para compará-lo com o outro. Não associação, calcular a associação. Principalmente, você pode calcular a associação com seu nome, seu valor objetivo. E então, este é um precaução padrão que avisa que você está procurando correlações em coisas. Então, não se torne muito entusiasmado com o efeito causal de coisas. Podem haver três ou quatro fatores no meio de você. Então, eu apenas introduzi então dois modelos ou métodos que eu uso mais em minha investigação. Aqui, eu não estou apresentando. Seria para usar, reduzir a dimensão por PCA e fazer algum clustering. E com um simples, que seria K-means. E apenas tentando mostrar para eles como o PCA é, como você pode compará-lo como o melhor. Introduzir um plano best fit ou moldar seu dado e depois reprojetá-lo em aquele plano. Então, você pode produzir uma visão clara de seu dado. Normalmente, isso é usado para pôr seu dado. Em vez de pôr em um espaço de suas características, você pôr em um espaço de componentes que são características artificiais produzidas por este método. É um método padrão. E então você pode até usar para limpar e selecionar atributos. E o clustering, os dois principais abordagens. Existem outros baseados em densidade. Mas os dois principais são algo como um abordagem de cima embaixo com o espaço, o mapa inferior, onde cada exemplo vai ser juntado no clúster. É a principal característica para associar dados que você não sabe quais são, como eles são associados. Se existe alguma estrutura no dado que não tem. Então, você tem que escolher algo. Você escolhe distâncias, dissimilidades e tenta escolher grupos no dado automaticamente. Esta é uma coisa automática. Existem vários algoritmos de clustering. Este é tudo muito visual, mas o dado é abstrato. E alguns têm alguns pros e contras. E eu explico um pouco mais profundamente o algoritmo K-means, muito usado. E é simples e normalmente usado para conjuntos grandes porque é mais fácil. Mas tem muitas familiaridades com o Voronoi diagrama. Divide o espaço. É um algoritmo interativo que busca a distância entre um centroro e o médio dos valores. Então, é um centroro que está tentando, sempre desplazir-se para o valor médio de seus elementos, de seu clúster. Então, isso até o lugar onde a interação parou e não há mais movimento, você diria assim. No final, apenas algumas palavras sobre o overfitting e os problemas que você lidar quando lida com o dado. Normalmente, se você tem muitas dimensões, muitos atributos quando você está analisando quantos atributos é o espaço, o volume é exponencialmente com o número de dimensões de valores. Então, se você tem muitos valores, você teria que ter mais, mais exemplos exponencialmente para preencher o volume. Então, às vezes o dado se torna escasso. E há alguns combinatorios explosões e alguns dias. E o principal é o overfitting. Então, você tem que ter um geral. Seu modelo não deveria modelar todo o seu exemplo. Você tem que aceitar algum erro de maneira que você tenha uma generalização. Para explorar, começamos com um visual, programação visual. Rapid Miner, é muito usado, é muito importante. E eu pensei que talvez eu tenha estudantes de arquitetura, então eles sabem o ar sopra e assim por diante. Isso seria uma boa maneira de introduzir. Um compositor de algoritmo visual que vai com o fluxo de dados de esquerda para direita. E principalmente, eu introduzi isso porque eles tinham até um wizard. Você pode fazer todo o processo de minería de dados no wizard, passo a passo, com cinco passos. É poderoso. Mas mesmo de coletar isso, limpar, selecionar o nome e escolher os modelos, ele analisa cinco ou seis modelos ao mesmo tempo. Então, você tem um ponto e assim por diante. Então, você pode construir o algoritmo que estava atrás do wizard. Então, você não tem uma caixa branca, você pode então ajustar tudo. Mas também o orange, é muito comum, parece para crianças, mas é muito poderoso. E é também visual, é muito interativo. Mas você pode lidar com imagens, texto e indução de regras e assim por diante. É um ambiente legal. Mas nós estávamos focados em Python. Para mim, não sou um expert, eu diria. Foi uma oportunidade para mim explorar mais o ambiente de Python como se torna um idioma muito comum em vários campos científicos e especialmente em analytics e ciência de dados. Mas isso foi apenas... Eu não tenho apoio especial para Python, mas é verdade que está sendo mais usado. E eu acho que é um bom idioma para arquitetos ou pessoas de GIS porque você pode aprender, você está aplicando em um ambiente de análise de dados, mas você pode usar em design algoritmico, então é muito conectado. Ou GIS, se você for. Ou até mesmo em DeepMap, e eu mostro isso. Estas foram as principais bibliotecas, as bibliotecas de Python para lidar com o analisamento de dados. De computação científica e cair números para obter dados do internet e tudo. Lida com frames de dados, com dados tabulares. E então, o aprendizado, o aprendizado com aprendizagem automática. E este é o ambiente. Normalmente, há muitas bibliotecas e elas são muito interconectadas. Então, normalmente, tem vários pacotes de Python que trazem todas as bibliotecas necessárias juntas. Anaconda é muito usado para mineria de dados e analisamento de dados. A maneira é porque eles trazem todas as bibliotecas e porque configurar um Python padrão não é tão fácil. Há muitas bibliotecas, dependendo de bibliotecas, dependendo de bibliotecas. E este é o aspecto de, nós trabalhamos com a Anaconda e usamos uma maneira específica de codificação com Python. O notebook, o notebook de Jupyter, é muito, é quase como um documento de Word ou se quiser. Mas com células e células podem ser imagens, podem ser gráficos ou código vivo dentro. Então, você pode imprimir, você pode compartilhar. É uma maneira boa de interativamente compartilhar sua investigação. Você pode ir aqui e colocar suas coisas. Existem algumas bibliotecas especiais para lidar com... Existem bibliotecas para tudo, há um mundo de bibliotecas para Python, mas essas são principalmente para análises especiais e sistemas de informação geográficos. Você pode lidar com a moldagem de arquivos e assim por diante. Coletar internet de mapas de rua abertas e assim por diante. Os exemplos, nós fizemos alguns exemplos simples, não era tão... Isso é como importar um CSV de uma análise de VGA e plotir o sumário, o sumário estatístico de todas as colunas. Então, tentar fazer alguns gráficos usando os seus formas muito poderosas de configurar gráficos de qualquer maneira que você quiser. Então, nós temos a mapas do gráfico de análise de VGA com o histograma e você pode até colocar os color bars e você pode configurar ou fazer mais complexas análises multidimensionais com esse gráfico de plot. Aqui, foi apenas outro exercício mostrando um pouco mais profundo porque o scripting pode nos ajudar. Por exemplo, para calcular o número de clústers com K-means, esse algoritmo para clustering, você tem que dar o número, o número de clústers. E isso é uma boa coisa, deveria ser. Você não sabe nada sobre seu dado. Você poderia ter um campo e experimentar. Em scripting, você pode fazer em uma maneira batch, produzir muitos modelos com dois, três, quatro, cinco, seis, sete, oito. E depois, para plotear, o plot é o que se chama, eu tenho que ler, é chamado de variança explicada. E há um neurístico, algo que eu chamo... Quando há um alvo nesse gráfico, você deveria escolher o número correspondente de clústers que existe no fundo. Este é um neurístico para calcular o número de clústers baseado em 4K-means. Outros algoritmos calculam isso para você, mas não é isso. Este é, por exemplo, eu não mostrei isso no workshop, eu deveria ter feito. Este é para conectar, por exemplo, uma mapas de rua aberta direta ao seu notebook. Dados de mapas de rua aberta. Aqui, com o branco e o vermelho, figuras, figuras de terra. Você tem que coletar e isso vai ao seu notebook e você pode continuar com a análise de rede, com bibliotecas de análise de rede e assim por diante. E a outra parte era mostrar o poder do scripting. Então, um poder era mostrar o scripting e nesse caso, até dentro do ar sopra, eu pensei que muitas pessoas o usariam porque eles eram arquitetos. Isso é usando o clustering de figuras geométricas. É um exemplo simples de clustering de figuras geométricas com K-means, eu acho. Ou aqui para classificar e escrever dígitos dentro do ambiente do ar sopra. E para plotear. Ou fazer uma regressão com um network neural. Existem componentes que tentam implementar todas essas bibliotecas que vieram de Python dentro do ambiente, do design. Então, aqui temos apenas os pontos e isso está ajustando a superfície para esses pontos. Até o sheezip só, apenas o plano. Ele encontra, é de uma maneira muito simples, está ajustando na superfície. Até você poderia fazer scripting lá, você poderia até fazer algum scripting dentro dentro de DeepMap, porque eu pensei, ou eles estão no lado de DeepMap ou eles estão em design algoritmo. Então, existia, foi algo que eu conhecia e eu queria explorar. Então, isso é muito recente e eu nunca o explorava antes. Mas existe um linguaggio de scripting simples para DeepMap chamado Sal script. E você pode fazer várias coisas com isso. Normalmente, usa essa vinheta para criar novos campos com uma fórmula ou algo assim. Mas você pode começar a colocar algum código "if then" e algumas funções simples. É muito limitado, não é um linguagem, um linguagem de scripting com três ou quatro funções. Mas, por exemplo, você pode fazer um "if then" para selecionar, por exemplo, se você está acima do médio, do médio, do médio de uma propriedade ou abaixo. E você pode, esta foi a parte que eu estava procurando. Então, você pode acessar os vizinhos no gráfico. DeepMap normalmente não permite isso porque ele processa todos os pontos e ele dá o resultado final. Aqui, você pode avaliar mais, ajustando os elementos que você quer no gráfico que está debaixo, que foi criado antes. Então, você tem um gráfico e você pode ir pesquisando para esses vizinhos. Você pode ir onde a posição sub位 of two ou algo assim. Este é apenas um exemplo. Então, pode ficar um pouco mais profundo, isso seria, isso seria plotir o valor mínimo de conectividade que o vizinho, que você pode ver. Eu estou aqui e eu ploto em meu lugar o valor mínimo de conectividade. E algumas estruturas aparecem, eu não fiz nenhuma curia sobre isso, mas parece que há algum caminho ou algo assim. Algum caminho estará aberto porque algo, eu realmente não... Este é muito recente, mas você poderia fazer um abrir um pouco porque você vai de um lugar confuso para outro e então parece que o caminho é iluminado como este jeito ou algo assim. Ou você pode plotear, por exemplo, da mesma forma, em vez do mínimo, o máximo. Então, você tem a partição do espaço em um tipo de isovis onde você está mapeando o valor máximo em isovis em todo o sistema. Então, você pode retirá-lo, eu não sei, algo assim. Onde estão os valores máximos de, eu acho que é conectividade nesse caso. E plotear, não, porque o máximo, os valores locais. Então, você pode ir através para ver onde eles estão. E para ver, isso foi para testar, sim, se você fazer um passo visual, eles cobrem todo o sistema porque você está recolhendo todos os lugares. Ou você pode apenas isolar um lugar de interesse e trabalhar com, fazendo um tipo de conectividade baseado apenas nisso, não todo o gráfico. É apenas para ilustrar, você poderia isolá-lo e então você pode usar. Seria algo como, ou fazer um erro, fazer um isovis de rainha. No final, apenas para concluir, marques. A minería de dados é usada em muitos métodos de minería de dados. Eles são usados em design e principalmente, mesmo em design e em análise. Mais em análise, mas em design eles podem ser usados porque eles têm uma forte tarefa de otimização, por exemplo. Mas tudo isso você pode, é parte do... Se tornou parte desse tipo de análise onde você pode começar a obter dados de vários lugares, principalmente rede social ou mídias sociais. social media, that using data scraping to assess a more or less legal way of assessing database, database in the internet where you create crawlers in the internet and you collect the scenes, geo-coding, to analyze unstructured data and management of database visualization and optimization. And that would be related with scenario creation, so you can have some optimization based on constraints, so you can, you can do it. And nothing, in the end, it was this, and just to say that, this would be a, this subject is would be a way, I think, to usefulness would be to assess the open data, for instance, that is becoming more available. There are a lot of big databases now that became more public, no? And another point that some people are involved, a point is that a way of involving the younger generation, the digital natives that born with internet, this would be to, now they have not met, but they have information to, to, to meddle with their hands and they are all the time creating it. And to get a more insight of us going behind the scenes and how that, how your that is being treated, know why in the internet there is an algorithm that can recognize our face. So, but how does it do it? It's not nothing of the other world, you can, you can learn it. And usefulness in design would be also to create richer programming for the, for the design, to have more information and do its things that are more meaningful to the user because you can collect this, this amount of that. But there's a lot of problems also because it's not that easy to, to implement. There is a black box effect, many algorithms are black, you don't know what happens inside them. Normally things like neural networks and so on, it's very difficult to understand, so. And it makes like, I think it says some risk of making reality go more far away because you have data in the middle and as a potential of the, as a, pointing it as a problem is getting the reality more apart from the designer or the, or people in general, because you have such a thick layer of, of information in the middle. And it is, thank you, thank you for.
I'm calling now Patricia Alonso. She's a deputized professor of the Department of Architecture and Urbanism, PhD student in architecture and urbanism from the postgraduate program in architecture and urbanism in UFPB. Currently doing part of her PhD studies at the Special Morphology Group at Chalmers Well, the presentation will be on development of permeability measure between private and public space.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Alonso and my presentation is the development of a permeability measure between private and public space. And the authors are myself from UFPB Brazil, Mieta Berggauzer-Pont from Chalmers, Sweden, and Luiz Doirado Morin from UFPA, also Brazil. And the content of this paper is part of my PhD studies on the relation between density, urban form and urbanity. And so the natural movement theory by Hillier says that the street configuration is the primary generator of pedestrian movement and activities. And many authors agree that high density generates a higher intensity of activities and movement in cities. However, in certain urban contexts, like Latin American cities and the specific study case of this paper, Brazilian cities, this may not be the case. In that context, sometimes high street centrality and high density, they come with low presence of people in public space. And our hypothesis is that this is caused by the specific way densification takes place. The present day Brazilian cities, they have a typical verticalization process mailing for housing with high-rise residential buildings, as you see in these photos, these are in João Pessoa, the, the study case city of this research. And these buildings, they have semi-underground floor and often also a ground floor for car parking because of the, the mobility policy that prioritize the private transport. So here in this paper, we analyzed two characteristics related to this densification type, which seem to contribute to less inviting and less safe streets. First, the bigger size of plots. These higher buildings, they demand larger plots because of urban law requirements. And for that, several plots, they are joined, as you can see in the pictures, reducing the number of plots per block. And second, the consequent lower frontage permeability. There are fewer entrance and blind walls due to these semi-underground floors for car parking. And so there is less interaction between buildings and streets. So we needed a more comprehensive and thorough frontage assessment. And then we developed a measure that captures the frontage permeability, both in a qualitative and quantitative term by verifying the frontage visibility and accessibility separately, the presence of setback, its depth and use, and the type of space, referring here to the land use, which there is permeability to. So we define the frontage permeability as its property to allow interpersonal interactions in both visual and physical ways between the public and the private space delimited by them. The study looks at the public-private interface from the public space perspective and the permeability measure, as I already said, is divided into two variables that are measured separately. The visibility, which is the property of the frontage to allow people to see through it. And accessibility, its property to allow people to pass through it. And the measures, they, they combine the degree, a quantitative measure of how visually or physically permeable the frontage is, to a qualitative evaluation about the type, I mean, the land use of space there is visibility or access to. So in this table, we can see the permeability is divided in visibility, accessibility, and both of them, they have a four category scale. So for visibility, we have no visibility and then visibility to empty space, and that means vacant plots or residual or underused space. And then visibility to private space and finally to public space. And then it is seen that the setback, if there is or no setback. And for accessibility, it's the same, no accessibility, no accessibility, sorry, no access. The control access to private space and that is when you have a gate or a door. And this private space, they are residential use. The control access to public space, all other public, semi-public or collective use like retail, service, et cetera. And finally, the open access. And again, it's, we check there is setback or no. The entrance of closed or abandoned buildings and entrance of garages, they are considered of as no access because it is understood that there is no social interaction in this case. So the data gathering was made by Google Street and Google Earth, the mapping with AutoCAD, the data processing and analysis with GIS software. And the visibility values were based on the average height of the eyes of a pedestrian walking on the sidewalk level. And the high limit to open access, which is a barrier with 40 centimeters high, considers the intention of territory demarcation. Of course, you can pass through it. But we understood that accessibility is not only about being able to pass, but also about permission to pass. The lengths were measured in meters and each plot's frontage is the sum of the several entities according to the variables values for visibility and accessibility. The geometric representation is with lines with attributes according to that table that I showed you. And the line length is also added like as an attribute. And in case of a setback, its depth and its use. So the length of each permeability category was measured to then develop various indexes to describe the frontage permeability of each plot. So this is the calculation of the main indexes, the visibility one and the accessibility one. So they are based in the total length of the plot frontage. And we also developed some sub-indexes that we found that should be important, like the visibility and accessibility index to public space and the visibility and accessibility indexes to both public and private space. And another one is the accessibility index for open access. The pilot study are selected areas of Manhãira district in João Pessoa city, Brazil. These photos are from this district. And it is an economic functional centrality because it is a sub-center in the, in the city with housing, retail and services. It is also a demographic centrality because it has high population density and also a morphological centrality because of its high values of density and integration choice, I mean, the syntax measures and accessible density. This accessible density is measured with the place space tool. It's a plugin for QGIS that uses syntax analysis for measuring the accessibility through the streets to different contents of urban space, for example, density, that's one, the one I use. So based on the natural movement theory, again, we would expect high levels of people movement in this area. However, in the preliminary observation, this is not, it does not seem to be the case. And here we have a map with the four areas, the testing areas, the areas one and two, I don't know if you can see, they are in the north part, they have the highest values of accessible, accessible density in local radio within the district range. And the areas three and four, they have medium to high values in the same radio, and they are next to malls that act as attractors. So as the testing areas have high centrality and accessible density, in a district that is also a centrality, it was supposed to, to be expected urban vitality. But according to our hypothesis, there are other variables and they are the plot size and the frontage permeability that may affect this relation between density, centrality and urban life. And in order to test this hypothesis, the permeability measures are related to local density. And I mean the local to, to, to make a difference from the accessible density that is a configuration measure. So the local density, it's basically FSI, the floor space index, plot size, frontage length and land use. This paper does not relate the morphological data to people presence in the streets. This is the next step in the research. And here we have the maps of the four testing areas showing the frontage accessibility. It's not a good image also. And here the frontage visibility, in all areas, there are many frontage with low visibility. And the findings with statistics, we cannot say that there is a statistical correlation between visibility and accessibility indexes to the density values, but we found a pattern in the low and medium densities up to FSI three, the entire range of visibility and index and accessibility index is present, the entire range of it, we can see there. At high densities, FSI above three to eight, both indexes remain low. So this pattern is repeated in the indexes comparisons with plot area and frontage length. It also occurs with the visibility and accessibility sub-indexes for public space and for both private and public space. And this repeated pattern confirms the hypothesis, the hypothesis that this high-rise residential buildings type cause not, cause not only urban densification, but also a decrease in frontage permeability. And there is no statistical correlation between accessibility index and visibility index. That means that these variables do not necessarily come together, which confirms the pertinence of the proposed method in measuring these two variables separately. And we can see also in this chart that both public use plots, retail and service, and those with all other use present high and low frontage permeabilities. Also in plots with other use, the low values predominate. This indicates that the frontage of public use plots are not necessarily more permeable, which is confirmed in these two charts, which relate the number of plots with public use and other use to the, to the, to the indexes, the visibility one and the accessibility one. So in, in yellow, you, you have the public use and blue the other use. And there is a strong correlation between the indexes of accessibility and visibility to public space, which indicates that when there is higher visibility for public space, there is also higher accessibility. But in the indexes of. But in the indexes of accessibility and visibility to both private and public space, when they are together, they have no strong correlation. So when we analyze this together, we can say that in the frontage of residential space, there is a mismatch between accessibility and visibility. The sub-index accessibility for open access is always very low. I didn't show it. It's very low in any graph. So it demonstrates that open access is very uncommon in this area. And the setbacks are mostly used for parking, so they don't contribute to social interactions. And the moderate correlation between density and plot area and between density and frontage length show that there are still many buildings with high FSI, I mean density, in relatively small or medium plots and with low or medium frontage length. So the hypothesis that the verticalization type in focus brings about bigger sized plots is not confirmed. The conclusion. First, measuring the frontage visibility and accessibility separately has proved to be pertinent because these variables do not necessarily go together. And verifying the land use is also relevant because the frontages of public space are not always more permeable. But when they are, they present higher visibility and also higher accessibility, which does not necessarily happen in private space frontage. So the initial result confirm the hypothesis that the increased densification model in Brazilian cities with high-rise residential buildings generates a decrease in the frontage permeability, although it does not change the plot size and the frontage length in a significant way. And we can say that the dissemination of this building type generates low interaction between streets and plots since it's often surrounded by blind walls with no visibility and few accesses, especially when they are built side by side. According to the results, there are also less dense types that have low frontage permeability. And this is about our urban problems. The fear of urban violence, it's very present in our cities. However, this case commonly have isolated walls which can be easily modified or demolished to generate higher permeability. But in high-rise buildings, most of the frontage are semi-underground garage walls, as you can see in these photos. And they are more permanent structures and more difficult to modify. So this is a bigger problem. And it's important to stress the role of urban planning and management in controlling this lack of frontage permeability. The urban law should define minimum percentage of frontage permeability and stimulate the mix of use. And I am finishing. I want to say that these are preliminary results. This is not big data. It's an ongoing investigation. Other empirical studies need to be carried out for more complete and representative data. And the next steps of the research are expanding the testing areas and relating the morphological data to people presence in the streets. Thank you very much. Obrigada.
Well, last but not the least, I will call Luiza Canes de Silva. Well, she's a PhD professor in the University of Lisbon, sorry. And the main topic of work is on learning spaces. A presentation will be on the centrality of vocational oriented knowledge, an assessment of the location of polytechnic institutes in Portugal.
Hello, everyone. I'll try to be brief and to deliver a light presentation since we are finishing this wonderful symposium. As Franklin said, I'm Luiza Canes de Silva and I work with Treze Torre and Mafalic Can at Citué, the Center for Innovation in Territorial Urbanism and Architecture at Tecnico in Lisbon. And I'm feeling a little bit off topic here because my focus is really on the case study. Because even though we do use formal methods and space syntax concretely, we focus on learning spaces in my research group. So we've been working with higher education learning spaces for the past years. And in this case, I'm focusing on polytechnic institutions in Portugal. Because higher education in Portugal, well, worldwide, has changed a lot. And a lot of pressure has been imposed on higher education infrastructure. And of course, we have to adapt to so many things, as massification of higher education, the global changes and, for instance, the implementation of the Bologna process, which was signed about 20 years ago. And still, it feels like our buildings are not able to react to all these changes. So we had a highly changed higher education system worldwide. And then we have buildings and infrastructure that are not adjusting at the right pace. So of course, we want to analyze these infrastructures and to understand how can we improve them and how can we make better decisions in them? And how are they related to better missions or to different missions of higher education, mostly focusing on social aspects and interaction? So if we have a higher education system with a tri-fold mission based on teaching, research and outreach, in Portugal, we have to differentiate between universities and polytechnics. And even though recent OECD studies have shown that this tendency in some aspects is getting blurred, still, one of the main assets of Portuguese higher education system is in fact this binary structure. And polytechnics have been perceived as very successful infrastructures in combining and attending to vocational knowledge. So according to Portuguese law, they are oriented towards the creation, diffusion and transmission of professional-type culture and knowledge. And they should focus on vocational training and professionally oriented technical development. Considering this, then we have to look at the geographical dispersion of knowledge institutions in Portugal. And on your left-hand side, you have the map of universities in Portugal. And we can see a clear tendency towards the location of these institutions in the main cities, Lisbon and Porto, and in the coastal area. But then we have polytechnics spread more or less all over the place. And of course, they have a huge responsibility in educating the more segregated areas because these places can really be connected to different kinds of population and be a key asset in developing the country. In this case, we are focusing on two of them, especially because we are applying a methodology that analyzes the institutions starting from the city. So we consider the city at its global scale and then we go deeper into analyzing the institution in order to understand how do these institutions respond to their mission in terms of being open to society, open to the academic community and providing spaces that can be used by the public in general. So we are working with Bragança in the north and Beja in the south because these are the extremes in terms of polytechnic institutes. Also because they have very similar conditions. So the cities are more or less the same size. Bragança is 2 square kilometers larger than Beja and they have roughly 25,000 inhabitants each. So they are very similar in demographic terms. If we move forward to the axial and segment analysis, then we can see that their structures are in fact different. So while Beja has a deformed grid system that is grounded on a radial structure, Bragança is much more organic, much more relying on topography and with the strong influence of a valley that crosses roughly north-south. We can also see the fragmentation in the structure if we analyze the numbers on the axial and segment maps because we have a ratio of relationship between axial and segment lines that's smaller in Bragança, which is consistent with its shorter lines, and that reinforces the levels of fragmentation that we can perceive. So when we move to the axial analysis and we try to understand the position of the institutions within the structure of the system, the first thing that we can see is that they tend not to be very integrated. So in Beja, the polytechnic institute is located to the west of the city. I'm not sure if you can see it from there. And in Bragança, roughly in the geographical center, a little bit south. But the cities present very different structures in terms of syntactic properties. So the integration levels in Beja are higher than in Bragança. So the structure of the city is manifesting here. And also, the polytechnic has a better average value in Beja than in Bragança. If we analyze its main access, because we think it's a key issue for visibility of the university is the location of the main access. Again, we are still analyzing integration. In Beja, there is a better response or a better potential for the university to become a destination. Still not very good because in these cases, both precincts belong to the 50% more integrated areas of the city, which is not that good. When we move on to analyze between a centrality, then the results are slightly more encouraging. And you can see that in both cases, the precinct of the polytechnic is sort of relying on the foreground structure of the city, even though composed mostly by background structure. So it means it behaves more or less like a neighborhood, but grounded on the most prone-to-be-used paths in these locations within the city. Here, although, we can find much better values. So the cities perform better in general and they even fit into the normally considered, like the reasonable values defined by Hillier for this variable, the angular choice. When we get to analyzing the main entrance, then the results are way more encouraging. And this is in fact consistent with some analyses we've done previously with universities worldwide that shows that even though the universities tend to be somehow segregated and private within their precincts, they usually have some more visibility in their main access because that makes them attractors and that makes them part of the urban landscape of the city. So they are visible and they get a physical presence within the urban tissue. Then we went a little bit deeper. So we've analyzed the precincts and we chose two specific buildings of each one. We've analyzed both the agrarian schools of both cases and also the health schools of both cases. And while the agrarian schools are located in campus, the health schools are located off-campus in Bragança because they are connected to the health center in the area. In Beja, just by proximity reasons, I think they didn't have any more plot available in campus. So the health school was developed a little bit more recently and it was developed outside. And we started by creating a functional analysis that separated the sorts of spaces that we wanted to analyze. So regarding collective spaces and academic spaces, there is not much differentiation. But we've analyzed specifically the places that could be used by the exterior community. So auditoriums, cafes, libraries, information centers and so on. What we found was that the structure of the buildings somehow responded to the structure of the city. And we have a more fragmented and difficult-to-read structure in Bragança than in Beja. Also, the topography doesn't help. And here, there is something that might be of importance because in Bragança, the schools tend to have more connections to the exterior, which of course seems like a good thing when you want to reach the auditorium or the bar or anything. But then you have the power of the key master. So we actually don't know in Citu, how does this work? Because this structure can be severely affected by the man that locks the door. More or less the same pattern for the health schools. So we have still very deep schools if we consider that they reach seven levels of deepness. So if a student wants to go to a classroom on the last level, it's still a lot of effort to reach. This is just another organization to simplify the things. And it shows that there is at least one very good issue is that we have a complete mix of uses. So we cannot say that we have classrooms on the easiest level and then research areas in the top one. It doesn't happen like this. And we have a complete mix of uses. And at all levels, it's possible to find almost all sorts of spaces. So to conclude, we don't have a lot of conclusions because this is work in progress. And well, of course, I only shown two cases. We have some more, but still not enough to have support, well, to support all of our information and our research. So I would say the most interesting thing is that really, universities don't seem to have changed according to the changes in missions that they have had in the last decades. And actually, we are still building campuses as we did in the 19th and 20th century in America. So we really should start thinking about how do we want to build for what we want to teach and all the student-centered processes that we have and also some of the types of learning that we've seen here in this symposium. Because most of our spaces are really not responding, not even to the social changes that we have. So it's important to consider how do we want to teach our students in the future and how do we want our spaces to convey the missions that we are supporting and that we are spreading. So thank you for bearing with me in the last part of the symposium. I appreciate that you are still all here.
There is a thing I would like to, please, please. Why some places, there are a lot of people and the other ones, there are not much. And I was thinking, you decided to do this research as describing how the spaces are. But what if you tried to look for how many places to go there or how many places can people come from? Wouldn't this give you a better reading of how many people, vitality of a street than just describing if you can or not go there? On the way here, I passed through a few squares that are very beautiful and completely accessible. But it doesn't mean that I'll go to that place. Yeah, to check this vitality that you were searching to describe, right? How many people be on the streets? It was pretty much this what you're trying to describe and see if that space could define it.
Yeah. What will be very important to me, and I don't have this data yet, is to know the people movement, the data about the people movement in the streets. So I intend to go there and to measure it and to try to correlate with this morphological data. But to see where are they going. Well, it could be a way. But what I wanted to check, it was the relation between the density and the form of the city and the social process that can occur in the city. So when I go to the retail store, we find a lot of outlets that defend that high density likely will bring more people. And the syntax also tries to show that more centrality also is important to compresen. And the syntax also tries to show that more centrality also is important to co-presence. So I try to find an area with high density, with high centrality. But there are other varieties, that is the frontage and the plot size. And I think that these characters, they can, they come with the type of the building, and they can also interfere. Of course, they are not designed, they're not decided, but they interfere somehow maybe in this presence or not presence of people in the street. As it is central and as it is dense, it is supposed to have people there, because it's a centrality. It has housing, and it also has retail. So, okay, I can try to see where are people going, but there are people living there, and these people, they have to leave their house. So what I'm trying to say is that—
Because there's a bunch of people there, there should be many people in the streets, pretty much this.
Well, there is a lot of things that interfere in this, as I said. For example, the urban problems in Brazil make it—people fear the street, so it's very common. Even the houses that are not so dense, they have walls. But what I was trying to find is that with more densification, with these high buildings, this lack of permeability, is it getting worse? And my data, it's still a little data, but it already shows that the more dense, we have more lack of permeability. And of course, it interferes in the way people feel in the street. I don't know if I was clear.
More questions?
Patricia, I have a quick question. Do you think you are going to research the typology, the variations of typologies according to your variables? Say, certain types of building make the situation worse for co-presence, and certain improve it, or, I mean, within this range, if you are going to try to find sort of differentiation?
Yes. The first thing is the density. When I have a higher density, usually it comes with verticalization. It's a process that occurs there. The densification is by verticalization. And this kind of verticalization with these high buildings for houses, they have a very clear type of this base that makes this wall. When you have not so high buildings, it's another type that sometimes is more permeable. But the thing is that in all area, it's very common to find lack of permeability. They think, that's why the graphics, they are not so clear, because there is no correlation, because when you go to low densities, they also show lack of permeability, but not always. So you have, it's spread. But when you go to the high density, it's always low density. So it's very clear that the type is showing this relation. I don't want to say correlation in a statistic way, it would be wrong, but they are connected.
Also for Patricia. I mean, I think the study is very interesting, because it shows how different places in the world have, you know, because of their different setting and their different organization, that a measure that is developed at one place may not necessarily apply to another. And looking to the situation in Singapore, I think your study seems quite relevant, because we also have a lot of residential—I mean, most residential, most housing is high-rise or relatively high-rise. But there are two very distinct types. One is public housing, which is, does not have any wall around it, which is completely open, and even has the ground floor completely open through void decks. So you don't only have the permeability, but you actually also have porosity. And then the private housing, which also has all these walls around it. And I mean, of course, there's still differences, but, you know, just reflecting on that, it's quite obvious, of course, how one has a lot more potential, and you also see a lot more people walking around than in the other situation.
Something Patricia said touched my heart. Three words: hypothesis is not confirmed. I know João Ventura, we talk a lot about his work, and he says, in our discussions, that he has not, in his work of several years, he has not arrived to great conclusions. Well, this modesty and dishonesty is absolutely marvelous in our works. In all your presentations, there are honesty and modesty, and this is really marvelous. We can compare with some other speeches on architecture, when, well, there are clear sentences that sets the truth, and they are norms, they are normativity. And I have nothing against normativity, but I have, when normativity tries to be the truth, that I cannot allow. And I think this approach we have, the use of formal methods, is one of the ways we have to affirm this modesty and dishonesty. Because it's very difficult to deny the facts we collect and the methods that are explicit, they cannot be falsified. Well, I think it was, it was this I would like to say. And thank you. We are ending now, and we are going to, well, to where? Okay. Thank you very much.
Only a few words to Patricia. Dear friends, the fourth International Symposium Formal Methods in Architecture will soon be coming to an end. On behalf of the organization, I should like to express our most sincere gratitude to all of you for your combined efforts. It has been a great honor for us to spend these past four days with you. With your activity participation, the symposium successfully completed all of its goals. This was the most rewarding thing to witness. The primary goal of this symposium was to bring together researchers from all the world who would be able to engage in a lively and intellectually open dialogue, discussing the issues facing architectural formal methods, making constructive contributions towards strengthening our research practices and approaches, helping to promote interdisciplinary exchanges, and to explore new research questions. We decided to begin with a model adopted in previous formal methods symposia, and use this to create a new and exciting meeting, combining contents of quality and adding some stimulating activities such as workshops or social gatherings. We also discard the possibility of parallel sessions to ensure the cross-fertilization of the various scientific fields. We knew it will reduce the number of possible papers accepted and quantity of communications presented, but sponsors agree with it and support this decision. After all, we don't seek quantity but quality, so we are totally convinced we took the right option. Obviously, we can improve the way we did things and get better in the future. Apart from the keynote sessions, the most powerful impression that we have formed over these days has been related to the quality of the papers presented, the quality of the papers presented, and the debates that they gave race to, providing us with the opportunity to scrutinize both state of heart and the state of the practice in the architectural formal methods umbrella field, to present advanced experiences, exchange of ideas and measured practices, and propose many constructive ideas and suggestions for improving architectural formal methods from a theoretical and a methodological point of view, to discuss some of the challenges facing architectural formal methods today. So, RFM. Some concrete ideas emerged, and many new connections we made that we are sure will have a positive impact in this field. We believe that the closing of this symposium will not be an end, but a new starting point. What comes next? Okay, we can maintain professional or and personal contact between us. We can invite each other for future meetings, lessons, workshops, or combine and merge expertise to provide mutual and complementary service to society. We can even build a platform for international cooperation in SCABA. This is a new brand, a new acronym that we invented, Space Configuration Visibility and Visibility Analysis, that cover a large spectrum of our work. So built a multipolar network to communicate between us and with the society, to discuss and support people and organizations who are designing the future of the cities and the environment. The Oporto Art Project team is now emitting a closer to Porto that can be linked to others around the world. Before I formally close the symposium, please allow me, on behalf of the organizing committee, to express again our sincere gratitude for the support of Oporto Art Formal Methods Project Team in making possible for us to host this symposium, and for the participation of all those involved. I should like to thank to the institutions that support this symposium. The SESSAP, Cooperativa de Ensino Superioritística do Porto, é real, to ESSAP, Scholars Superioritística do Porto, and its master program in architecture for the institutional support. The Nordwindwind Program and Oporto Art Formal Methods Project Team, which allowed to fit in our activities the support of the European regional development found from European Union. I should also like to extend a further word of thanks to the various people who helped to make this symposium a success. I make an account, I suppose more than 300 people are involved in this, okay? Not only the people that are here, but all the people that committed something to this symposium. So I should like to extend to the group of keynote speakers, of course. It was an honor for us all to be able to listen, to discuss your ideas. We link it remotely to Rio de Janeiro also. I would like to the group of volunteer chairs who conduct the paper sessions. Fortunately, you had the gong power, you and me had the gong power, okay, to shut down discussions due to time constraints. As you know, in Portugal, we are ferocious with delays, we cannot support delays at all. I would like to thank to the dedicated staff of meeting desk and the support team. I just want to let you know, support team and staff here, that having you in your team made all the difference. Next time, I will make T-shirts, okay, and give you a T-shirt that says, "I'm outstanding beautiful." To the members of scientific commission for their effort, availability, and commitment, they will continue to work on proofreading articles for publication. Oh, of course, you will work a little more, work not stopped yet. To all my colleagues of the organizing committee, with special thanks for Professor Franklin Moraes, Catherine Ruivo, Ixne Paixão, without whom it will be impossible to carry out this task. Also to David Leitviana and Isabel Chida-Cavaleiro for their continuous effort and contacts with several institutions and personalities. David can fill my mail with an average of 135 mails per day, more or less. To have been with me, working at the forefront over the last years. I know things have been a mess sometimes, and the rush hours were tough, but you did a great job. I know Professor Franklin's list of tasks to perform are increasing week by week. Nowadays, the list have more items to do AACP than in the beginning, and the symposium is at the end, so I will need more nine months to complete all. To all of you, for your patience with all the various inconveniences that may have been caused by our less than efficient organization of the event. And finally, I will thank, of course, because we try to think about everything, but we give the best, but sometimes the things don't occur well. So, an event such as the symposium, which brings together people from so many different parts of the world, demands a great deal of organization, planning, and time consumption. I feel, as I am sure the others do, that these efforts have been rewarded by some of the most creative and thought-provoking sessions we have held so far. And everyone connected with architectural formal methodologies are very grateful for that. I know, of course, that symposium happy hours are shortly, I know that, sorry, must be. I hope, after all, this four International Symposium Formal Methods in Architecture held at Porto in 2018 will leave a memorable and lasting impression of all of you. Now it's time to mingling once more, okay? I hope to see you in the conference dinner. Thank you so much for making this Porto symposium possible and for making it so truly memorable. This four International Symposium Formal Methods in Architecture is now formally closed. Thank you.